Call this meeting of Wayne County Commissioners to order. Any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Unanimous.
I don't have the claims. Here they are. Move to play the claims of 318.
Second.
Unanimous.
That's all there is today.
Okay, I have first up this morning, I have with us Dan Burke from the Public Health, who is our COVID-19 coordinator, and Matthew Kane, and to give us an update on where we are here this morning. And I know it's changing every 15 minutes or so, so Dan, why don't you just kind of brief us just a little bit here, please?
Okay. I'm here on behalf of Christine. She's involved in a meeting at Reed Hospital right now with their officials as things develop. We have initiated our pandemic plan, which is also being revised at the time, too. We're working in coordination with EOC and Matt and then their agency to get information out to the public.
Okay.
Our role with emergency management in this right now is kind of a supporting role with the Health Department. We, too, have been going through the plans, making sure that we're following everything that's already been established as the steps that need to be taking place. Yesterday, you know, we went to the Level Two, the travel watch for the county, just kind of strictly to, in my opinion, it's important to portray how serious we're taking this. A lot is resting on our shoulders as a county and how we respond to this. And I think it was an appropriate step. One of the best quotes I've heard so far throughout this in the last week is, if it feels like you're doing it too soon and it's unnecessary, chances are you're doing it exactly the right time when you're referring to a pandemic. So we're all kind of making the best decisions we can based upon the limited information that we have.
Right.
And that's even at a national level. That's not just locally. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, any questions? Any questions for you?
I'm just wondering if you can share with us, Dan, how many individuals in Wayne County have been tested for COVID-19?
I do not have that count with me. I know individuals have been tested, but I don't have an exact number.
And no results have been reported back through Wayne County Health Department to ISDH?
None have been reported to us, correct. Besides the positive Franklin County.
Out of Franklin County.
Correct. That's the only case.
Okay. You will keep us informed?
As of yesterday. Now, what Christine finds out today, that information could change, but as of yesterday, that information is correct.
Okay. Anything else? If not, keep up the good work, keep in touch, and we're here to assist in any way we can.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Perhaps we should ask you again, what should an individual do who feels that they may be coming down with the virus? What is our Health Department's recommendation that they do? Rather than us stating it, what is the official line from our Wayne County Health Department?
If a person is not feeling well, they need to stay home and self-isolate. If they have the means to take their temperature at least twice a day, monitor their symptoms. If their symptoms do not improve, call their health care provider and ask further instruction from them. Their health care provider may not want them coming through the lobby, so forth and so on, they will ask them screening questions. But the main thing right now is to stay home if you're not feeling well, monitor yourself. If it progressively gets worse, contact your health care provider.
Do not go call first.
Correct. Call first.
Call first.
Call first, whether that's urgent care, private doctor, Reed Hospital, any medical facility out there, you want to call them first.
Excellent.
If not, you may be stuck in a very long line outside answering screening questions.
Right. Because you will not be admitted to a facility.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
And speaking of that, we just need to remind the public that all individuals coming to the courthouse or the annex are screened before admitted, and no one with a temperature over 99.6 is admitted to county buildings in order to protect themselves or employees and the general public.
That is correct. And we will be implementing, once we're completed with our relocation, the same procedures, if not, no contact for a while. We've purchased some mailboxes and things of that nature where people can still get their birth and death certificates and things, but there will be no personal contact with that.
Good idea.
Those procedures have not been put in place yet because we're not done with the move, but as soon as we are and we're complete and we're ready to start operating again, we will implement procedures.
When do you anticipate your new location will be? We're not announcing that yet.
I cannot answer that question. Not that we don't, we anticipated Thursday, but there's some technical issues and some physical issues that need to be handled first, so I don't want to give you an exact date. I'd give you a wrong answer.
And people have till October 1st to get their STAR license?
I believe that's.
So there's plenty of time to get that STAR license?
Yes.
There's no reason to rush the Health Department on that one?
No.
Good. Thank you very much.
And there are also other means. They can also do via mail or internet to the State Department of Health, too. They can still get their birth and death through the State Department of Health.
Oh, ISDH, IN.gov/ISDH?
Correct. And just follow the birth and death links.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bob, you're going to be up.
We need to spring forward on our clock.
Yeah, we do. It's a little behind, isn't it?
I thought those clocks were radio controlled. They shouldn't have.
That one didn't change.
That's really the time you guys start early.
Hey, we just gained an hour then, didn't we? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. So I have actually quite a few things here.
Woo, good.
Start with our 2020 bridge projects. Bridge 227 on Economy Road, the pile driving for both sides has been completed. We're currently working on pouring the concrete abutments, so that job is moving right along. We're still looking at Bridge 77 on West Eaton Pike in late April, May, and then Bridge 41 on Salisbury Road following that. The bridge on State Road 38 over Nettle Creek west of Hagerstown is going to be replaced this summer. The bids are going to be taken in May. It's the letting date. We have an unofficial detour, which comes across Turnpike Road really all the way, and so NDOT is wanting signatures, and they wanted the Commissioner's signatures on that. So Mike and I had talked about it, and I mean, that's, we're the ones who gave them the detour, so we agreed with it.
Is that down Brick Church to Turnpike?
No, it's Turnpike all the way because we were concerned that trucks couldn't make the sharp turn onto Brick Church.
Yeah.
So if they go straight and angle out, then they'll just come out far to the west. So that's the detour. I mean, we know.
So that'll be going right past Little League Baldine Mills?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, some traffic is going to take Tidewater. We know that, but that road is so narrow. And again, this is the unofficial detour. The official detour is three down to 70 and back up one.
All right.
So hopefully, we won't have a lot of trucks on it.
So the obvious one is to take Turnpike to Brick Church and turn right.
And cars may do that one, too. Or, again, take Tidewater for cars potentially going to New Testament Church or places like that.
Tidewater would be easier to do, wouldn't it?
But it's such a narrow road. We don't want a lot of traffic on that if we can avoid it. So any traffic going clear west to Newcastle or something, that's why this is the unofficial detour.
So you never get on Brick Church for the unofficial detour?
Right. Again, people may. We just have to pick a route out, and so that's the one we picked, that NDOT will reimburse us for damage if there is damage on it.
I'm going to take Brick Church.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Move to approve.
Second.
Unanimous.
The next item, the Gar Jackson Road, last month, month and a half ago, we had talked. And I, at that time, I thought that all payments had been made. I've since found out that there's still one payment that has not been made for the easements. So I'm holding off a little bit until that payment gets made. So just to give you an update on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Bridge 266 on North 24th Street, the construction engineering proposals are due April 7th. We only received two previously, so we had to open that up again because we need to get three. And so we'll make sure that happens this time, or at least letters from companies who are not going to do that. So that, but we're still in good shape. I mean, it doesn't bid until December is the plan, so if we receive them in April, that won't be a problem. There are three more appraisals. These three, again, just one signature is needed. They are actually, it's not just a temporary easement, but it is some land, like .06 acres on one, .1 acres on another, and .077 on another that will actually be a taking. So those three, we need a signature on.
Move for the President to sign.
Second.
Unanimous.
The National Guard won't be sending heavy equipment over our bridges, will they?
I hope not.
What does a tank weigh, anyway? We don't expect really heavy equipment from the National Guard, do we?
No.
No, I think it's friendly equipment. Right. They're going to be helpful, not anything warlike. I think they had some National Guard out during the flood of '08. I mean, they have been deployed in recent years. I was really surprised that it was called out this early before we had very many counties. There was only a handful of counties with diagnosed cases, but I guess having them poised and ready to go is better than waiting till the last minute when it's acute.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on, Bridge 61 on College Corner Road. We are still moving forward with that one, so just keeping that on the radar. It's kind of one of them that's, doesn't, not much attention is paid to it, but we're still moving forward, working on that one. Upcoming federal aid projects. Design engineering proposals were submitted to Wayne County this past Friday on Bridge 705 on Richmond Avenue. We received four proposals. And as a reminder, Bridge 712 on Richmond Avenue, which goes over Sheridan Street, well, even though we didn't get funding, we're still going to want to do that at the same time because we're going to be raising Bridge 705 to do a concrete overlay, so we want to do all that work together. So whoever we award 705 to will be putting some towards 712 of our own funding. Bridge 76 on Sample Road, we received nine proposals. And Bridge 191 on Heiny Road, we received eight proposals, so.
That's excellent.
That's excellent.
Good.
Makes it more difficult to.
Lot of work.
Yes. So we are reviewing those, and we'll let you know where we go with that. Bridge 225 on Beard Road. When we started that project, the, if you've driven over that bridge, you come to it and then you kind of go up and over the arch, and so one of the things we wanted to do was kind of smooth that out, but obviously, we don't want to raise Beard Road so high that there's huge drop-offs. And the hydraulics, we thought we would be able to not extend the length of the bridge a lot, but in doing the hydraulic study, they found out that we do need to extend it some, which on the north side, the northeast side of the bridge, we have Gabion baskets. Those are, if you drive Simhodgin down in the gorge, you see those stones in the baskets on the side of the road. That's Gabion basket. We've used those previously to hold the banks on the stream coming parallel to the road, which then feeds into the river. In order to not get into those, we had to do some adjustments and realignment of that bridge. So it took some extra funding, is what I'm getting to. So, and Park Deets has asked for an additional $3,500 for that investigation and what to do so that we didn't have to get into those and create more problems and more money. So I, I mean, that's.
I'd say.
That's an amendment to the contract for an additional $3,500.
Move for approval.
Second.
Unanimous.
On Bridge 701 on South G Street, we talked about a catch fence on that bridge, and I, because it's an historic structure, we'll have to go through the State Historic Preservation Office and so forth. And so we've been doing some research on, you know, the reason for the catch fence is to prevent suicides. And so we've done some research, and this information gives you numbers of calls and so forth. There has been, since 2011, one actual suicide resulting from someone jumping off the bridge, but a number of other calls. So I was talking to the engineering firm this morning about this, and they're going to start talking to the shipo people about this. I just wanted to know any other comments that you might have?
As much as I would hate to do that, I think it's necessary. It's, that bridge is too attractive.
Would you put that on the top, like you do on some of those where you have that curved part so that they can't get up and jump, or?
It is. I mean, the, one of the issues with it is that to do inspections on that bridge, we have to hire that snoop or truck, and they have to go out over the side and down. So we only have about seven or eight feet that we actually can put a fence and still get that truck over and around it. So, I mean, what we're looking at is on the north side, where the sidewalk is, it's got the concrete guardrail now, and we would have a fence probably coming off the back of it. I'm not sure exactly how it would look, but yes, that's what we're thinking.
And up by the curve.
To make it harder to climb.
Yeah, I like that better than the straight fence because they just call up the fence.
Right.
And jump, right.
On the south side, however, there's no sidewalk, so traffic is very near the guardrail. So to put a curve could be an issue. So we may need to look at a straight fence there just to help because we can't be too close to traffic. So that's the investigation that's occurring, but I just wanted to let you know where things are at and get any thoughts that you had at this point.
Any idea what that fencing will cost?
We had put $300,000 into the project for it. Again, I was at that point in time thinking of a taller fence, but we hadn't thought through everything, thinking about the snoop or truck and how they could inspect it. So, you know, a shorter fence would be less expensive, but we're still evaluating all options.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's what we're looking at right now. So just wanted to make you aware of those conversations.
Have you let the Lieutenant know that this is in the plan?
Yeah, I mean, we, he was aware of it, and I asked him his thoughts, and he said the same thing that you all said, that he feels it's very necessary just because, like he said, he's talked to a number of people down off of that bridge himself.
Wow.
So that's, yeah, it's just.
But I'm curious why that one and not others? I hate to suggest that.
Right. I know, I mean, having the school right there and a lot of people walking across it, but who knows?
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
It's always been the one. It's always been South G Street, yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay. Bridge 37 on Estebro. Back when we signed the original contract, if you recall, we, I first asked for a contract for the replacement of the bridge. And then we said, you know, we may have some options here of what we could do, so we only had them do the hydraulics, the survey, and the preliminary engineering, and we had a contract for that first amount. Then, and we now have information back on the bridge itself, and I have a new contract. I just got it yesterday, so I sent it to Ron, but I haven't got any information back. But I wanted to let you know that because we did that, this contract is actually almost $10,000 less in design because we were able to, by that preliminary study, now we're looking at going to a simple span bridge of 115 feet instead of the existing bridge, which is 160 feet long, and replacing it at that full length. So not only then will we be saving about $10,000 on the contract, again, I want Ron to review it before I have you sign it, but it's, will also, you know, a 30 to 40-foot shorter span of bridge.
Wow.
Will save a couple hundred thousand at least on this. So that has worked out well, so I just wanted to let you know that. And as soon as Ron gets through this, hopefully next week, we will get this signed. Saying next week, my trip to Florida, for some reason, has been canceled.
Whoa, no!
I will be here.
You're safer here.
Yeah. And then, so last item, well, second to the last item, really, the Gateway Industrial Park, they did have a meeting Monday night. They, the board did sign the agreement with Sugar Creek. There were still a couple of questions in that final contract that they need to go back and look and see exactly what was signed, and Sugar Creek's had, but it's very, very close.
There is.
So hopefully.
Hopefully 2020.
Yes.
So we need to be moving toward thinking of our appointments, don't we? It's time to be giving.
And our agreement with them.
Right.
That agreement has not been signed yet.
No.
So, and then you have February financials.
We do have, and I have talked with President Worr, because he was interested in when our million dollars plus would be coming, you know. And I told him once, you know, they got their contract signed. Ron has already given the preliminary contract, Dan Pondexter, so they do have that. But until all of the points are met in our agreement with them, only when that is done, then we would proceed to send a check to them. And so I advised him if he had not contacted the state yet about increasing the size of the board, he needed to do that to move forward because that would be something that would hold it up. And he said, well, we haven't done that, and I suggested they go ahead and do that. So that'll fill you in on my conversations with him, which we've had. So it is moving forward, but I can see the state taking a little time on the other part.
Right.
Because they just don't move that fast, yeah.
That's why he was a little chilly at Cudshaw's the other day.
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
Mike Sharp.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
How are you guys holding up?
Good.
Do you have any training going on that requires tandem truck cab occupation? Has the single truck occupancy caused any problem with training operations now that they're riding alone?
No.
Okay. Solo is okay? Good.
The only problem I get, like when we go coal patching, they're.
Yeah, they can't do that alone. Yeah.
The only thought I had is if we do that, we may send two trucks.
Yeah.
To do that, and they just follow each other to do, go through that.
Gas is cheap right now.
So that'd be cheaper than the other way. Daily work, been working on painting equipment. We had met for a couple weeks, but we did have there in February some snow time, working on the roads. Still working on brush cutting. A couple weeks ago, they did do the nighttime sign inspection where they drive through and check all the signs throughout the county and check for reflectivity, any problems with them. I think there's, I've got the final count, but I think he said there was around 40 signs or so that will have to be replaced. So actually, the sign, what we have to replace is down from where it normally is. Working on keeping up on the coal patching. Had to repair a fence, put some gravel in some turnarounds that we use for the highway, put in some birmingham. Did get all of the gravel roads graded and gravelled throughout the county. Installed a driveway pipe, done some shoulder work. Did some yard repair where we gotten over a little far this past winter. Got those yards fixed. Done some ditching. Took out a fence along the roadway, and then we also this week started sweeping intersections and bridges and curves throughout the county. So we're hoping that the snow's over with for the year, so we're going to get those. The one, our one, we're still waiting on some parts, our one vacuum truck that we send into the additions and so forth. It's been broke down for a while. We've had it apart, replacing some bushings and stuff in that. Parts are slower coming in, so once we get those parts in, we'll get that together, and that will be going out to start working on those. But going throughout the county, I think that helps in the intersections where the sand's at and people trying to drive and so forth. So we'll be working on the county. We hit all those roads.
Very good.
That also helps in preparing for when we go out and do our ceiling and paving, and that's less we have, sweeping we have to do is kind of pre-swept, but up in that area. The other thing I had was a question, kind of goes to the fairgrounds, will make kind of go to Steve also, so if you could bring up the fairgrounds.
I sure can.
I had a call from a property owner over on Crow Road. He has ground on the north side of Crow Road. Crow Road's a city street, so it's not really affecting the county highway, but it comes into the county highway property of the fairgrounds. So there's a tree or stream or water source that kind of comes through there. I think he has a, over here on this side, the property owner has a kind of catch basin where it comes through, and there's a drainage pipe that crosses Crow Road. And then this is all county property that kind of goes through the fairgrounds there on the west side that goes through there. He's indicated that there's some blockages in that stream or creek or whatever. Wanted to know if I could go in there and clean that and do that. I haven't walked that. Been a lot of rain and so forth. I haven't taken the time to get over there and walk it or anything, but I wanted to know what your thoughts and feelings were if you guys, you wanted us to try to go in there to, you know, we're not really.
Does he think the blockage is on his side or on our side?
Our side. It drains to the south, so it's draining out to the county property.
Down stream, down trees, probably some fallen trees.
Yeah, he indicated there may be some beaver or something in there and so forth, but it's out of the right of way. It's not really affecting the roadway, which.
It's not really affecting the roadway, which it's not our road anyway. But being county property, I didn't know if you wanted us to take a look at that and take our forces over there.
I think we should take a look and see, find out what it is, and let's see what we need to do.
Okay, it's not like we're going to be dredging the whole thing or anything like that. It's just trying to clean that up.
You have the expertise to make decisions too, so just...
You'll know.
Okay.
Didn't maybe have Brad go with him? Maybe the fairgrounds guys could help too? Maybe make it a joint project? See, what do you think, Steve?
No, no.
The highway can do it. We don't, we don't need fairgrounds.
Is that catch basin ours or his?
No, it's his. So, I, he think he has some tiles and so forth that kind of come down there.
Well, I was going to say, I, you know, we've got a tile somewhere like that.
Yeah, and so, I think ultimately will help some of our drainage out the fairgrounds also, but I didn't want to go in there and be way off right of way and so forth without getting permission and making sure everybody knew what was going on in case you get a phone call, why is the highway out there cleaning a ditch or some of that sort. So, we'll try to work to get it on the weather.
We own that property, we ought to do it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Just let Brad know what you're doing out there.
Okay, at this point then, Mike and I have been talking about the highway department as we look at COVID-19. And as you know, one of our key things is to be able to keep government up and running. Even with COVID-19, that doesn't mean that we couldn't have a snowstorm tomorrow or next week. And so, with those folks over there, as I said, Mike and I have been talking about what could we do to ensure that we would have staff available to us to be able to maintain our roads as well as any emergencies that we run into. So, Mike's come up with a couple of ideas. We don't intend to make any decision today on this, but as we're doing the overall talking and as we watch as things develop, the whole situation, as we know, can change in 15 minutes from now on there. But Mike, why don't you present the couple of ideas that you've thought of so far?
First thought was, okay, to split up. We have two people in the office is to split the office staff up into two different shifts, and then also possibly the garage, taking two people mechanical wise. We've got two mechanics, but putting somebody else with them, and then having another shift for the garage to be able to keep the mechanical side on. If you think about shifting, you know, having a night crew and a day crew for the highway department doesn't work out very well because you can't do a lot of things on the roadway at nighttime, you know. Unless it's snowing, we can go out and pile snow, but otherwise, you can't do a lot of things during nighttime or those hours. As you get in later in the summer and so forth, the hours can change a little bit. There may be some flexibility, but you know, at this point in time. So, you know, the first thought was is to, you know, run the one crew from 6:30 to 3:00 and then have the other crew come in like at 3:30 and run until like 11:30 at nighttime to where you're splitting some of that up. But then, if somebody goes down, you're still, you got to hold in them and from night crew to run the day crew, you know, it kind of gets...
Yeah.
It's kind of a little bit crazy if something would transpire. The other thing would be is to split the two shifts up to where you'd split the force in half. You'd have one, one half of the force working one week. The other force would not work that week. And then, towards the end of the week, on that Friday, towards, allow enough time to where they could try to clean, you know, how do you clean a county garage and everything up? But you try to clean it, but then there would be a timeframe of 48 hours or so unless there was an emergency. Things would be set in idle before the next crew would come in the next week, and then the next crew would work that week. And there's problems with that because you're losing forces because you only got so many forces of what you can do during that week. And then, what do you do, you know, they would be off. You wouldn't have, you couldn't have them in at the same time, so, you know. But then, how do you pay people? What do you, you know, you're telling them to take off or you're shutting them back out, but yet, you're doing it to protect the highway. Because if one person would come in, you're going to, you could lose potentially the whole highway department that you're going quarantine, and then you have nobody for the highway.
What I wanted Mike to do is to think about this so that, you know, we can have discussion because there are so many unanswered things that we don't have right now. And at the time when Mike and I talked about this, we did not have the preemptive COVID-19 case. Since that time, that has come up, so we had that. So, if all of a sudden, we had more and more. And his folks are all in there. We talked about what he has already done. We're normally the guys gather in the garage earlier in the morning, and so, we're making sure they're not gathering together, and we're keeping the separation and so on there. We're, we're not having them punch in to the clock on there. What Mike is doing now is we're putting the payroll in Kronos. Mike is doing that so that they could pick something up off of the clock. So, we're trying several different things out there because that's a, it's a, well, all of our county functions are vital, not just the, they're all very important. And so, our main goal is to be able to keep government up and running. And so, I wanted even to present that to you. So, as, over the next few days, as we're talking about all this, and he can continue to think on there, I do think in the office area that that's one that maybe we can make a quick decision on next. I think that's probably our easiest decision there.
But if we, I kind of like your idea of splitting 50/50. But if we wait on that and one person comes in, then that ship has sailed. We don't, we no longer can do that. If we're going to do it, let's do it now. And I, and I say those guys are sitting at home, be paid their full pay.
Well, we have to have some discussions on that. And I've talked with Ron Cross, and that is something that over the next period of time here, we need to have some discussion on so we know for sure.
I don't know what, say, board of accounts, all that.
We've got, we're getting information. Marion's got information, and Ron has information. I'm getting information. We're just going to have to have more discussion. But you're right, we need to do it soon here, within the next day or two to make some of those decisions on there. But I wanted you to hear what Mike had.
Splitting the shifts, I think, is more viable from the standpoint that, you know, because if you do have, the night shift is, you're going to...
That ain't worth it.
I don't think it's going to be worth it. And that's when I came up with the other idea, which I think is more viable, but I know it's taking more out, so...
So, you, I mean, you'll have to stop your patch paving because you don't have enough people for that.
We, we can still do patch paving. There's still work that we can do. Now, covering the county and getting the ceiling all done, you know, there's going to be some things that are going to be covered. I mean, I, I realize that. I think people realize that, you know, you don't, if you're cutting your force in half on what you can get done, I'm not saying we can't get any paving done. I'm not saying we can't get dishing done, pipes put in, things like that.
Not what we're used to.
But we're going to have to re-figure on what we're doing. Our roads are in fairly decent shape. We've had a fairly decent winter this year, so I'm not saying the roads are crumbling or we've got major downfalls. We've, we've got work that we have to do. Full force is better than none, but if you take the whole force out, that's where I'm looking at is that that's a problem.
But there's, at this point in time, no reason to reduce the force, right?
At this, nobody has symptoms. We're not having any problems. I'm just trying to think out ahead of the thing before you have a problem. Then, you're trying to think, what are you going to do? And then, when you start, you know, if one person has it, are we going to...
What are we going to do if one person has it?
Right, and here's what the state of Indiana is doing. They have advised that any employee older than 60 with underlying health conditions are advised to work at home. Now, you can't patch pave at home, okay?
Right.
But I'm wondering if there are some tasks, especially with the fleet management program, that maybe some of your employees who do have underlying conditions, even if they aren't over 60, but if they have asthma or respiratory conditions or something like that...
The capabilities of what they can do with the fleet and so forth, especially even at home, they, that's not their...
They can't do it.
Okay.
They're truck drivers, they're not computer...
They're the physical labor of the operation, you know. They're just the ones that would, I mean, that just, I don't think it's an option. I understand that and...
I mean, that, that's the first wave of a how-to analy... At this point in time, those that might have an underlying health condition, you immediately don't see the work that you could have...
The work that we have and so forth, there's so much that you can't do at home. I mean, it's all from within.
It's supposed to go out in the field.
And even in the office, it's, it's hard to, I mean, you would try to do something. The office, it...
But we don't want them in proximity to others.
Right.
At this point, you don't see any work that you could assign them to take into the home.
No, I, I thought, you know, what could we do?
You've already eliminated that.
I can send them home a shovel, but what are they going to do with the shovel? You know, what do you...
Mike has done an excellent job. We've had a lot of conversations on this. And, well, he's unique, but at the same time, all of our departments are unique that we have. Yours probably more so than...
Well, and I didn't want to, I don't want to cause more panic on the situation that's already panicked a lot. But I also didn't want to sit back and not try to come up with ideas of what we should do until it happens, and then we're still scrambling of what happened. So, that's why I brought it to Ken and said, "Hey, these are thoughts I've got. You know, I'm not saying we have to act today or yesterday. I just, I want to put it out there of ideas that are coming that..."
Well, what I would like to do, Mike, is, you know, we have to discuss this.
Sure.
Plus, there are several other things that is all coming into play here that we have to make some decisions on over the next day or two. We're waiting for the federal government to make a decision in there on certain things because your employees are going to ask certain questions that at the moment, we don't have the answers on. But this gives us good thought, and our goal would be to get back to you and to all of our employees as soon as possible if we have to make additional change or make changes in here. That doesn't mean this afternoon or tomorrow. We may make more changes as this whole area develops with the COVID-19. But I do appreciate you thinking ahead of time. It gives us something to think about as we can discuss this and as we put some of the other legal things in place that we know we're going to have to do with our folks and how, it's just, it's new, and nobody knows. It's an ongoing thing. We get stuff daily that comes in. So, we'll be back in touch, and you may get a call from me. Hey, come in, we want to finalize this, so I'll call you.
Okay, if we come up with any ideas, I mean, I'm still working on my ideas and trying to...
But at this point, you don't have any...
Come up with something. We're just, this is something nobody's ever had to deal with.
But you are taking temperatures of employees?
Not at this point in time, no.
Right.
Oh, but you could, you could start that, I think. Why not?
If I have a thermometer.
Let's get him a thermometer.
We're working on that. The supplies are extremely limited at the moment, but I'll see what we can do.
We've got plenty of soap.
Keep washing your hands.
We've got hand sanitizers. I'm working on trying to get a deal with, with some bottles to put with the guys in the truck. So, when they're out on the road, you know, before they eat and so forth, they can sanitize their hands and so forth.
We've got to get you a thermometer.
And remember, soap is better than hand sanitizer. Don't have a false safety factor that you can just hand sanitize.
Well, and the big thing is when they're out on the road, you know.
Right, that's where they need that.
That's where I'm trying to get to. But there's a short supply of that also.
We'll, we'll be in touch.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Steve.
Why don't they have a thermometer?
Well, we've talked to them, we've tried to separate those guys out there.
Well, they need a thermometer.
I'll get them stuff.
I'm over 60, and I have underlying conditions.
You are underlying.
I have lots of underlying conditions.
Lots of upperlying conditions.
I have lots of conditions.
I think we all have those.
So, do I go home?
Not today.
Not today.
You're a key element in coordinating all of the things that we do, just like myself, okay?
I think you stay in his office.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, Courthouse HVAC project. The cooling tower is in. If you've been on the west side of the courthouse, you'll see this nice big shiny new thing over there. And they should finish the hookups, and it should be back in operation by the end of this week. Final work on the third floor air handlers will take place the week of the third, March 30th. That's when the judges are out at conference, so the upper floors will be not in use. So, those air handlers that serve the upper floor will be down, but that work will be completed the week of March 30th. And then, final work after they've got that done, final work to balance the system, all those other places, you know, where we've had some heating and cooling variations. They will come in and balance the system. So, we're still looking at the project to be done by mid-March, or mid-April, mid-April. Jail Bond project, we had a status meeting yesterday. Canceled one of the meetings yesterday because of all the issues that were going on, but the jail bond project status meeting was held, and we actually held it off-site. We didn't hold it here. We held it over at the contractor's office for obvious reasons. And work continues there. It's still a complicated project. We're starting to get into the place where they'll be doing work in the, in the day, day cells and, and obviously, that involves moving some folks around. Andy is still optimistic that he can...
Do everything, yeah.
Based upon the population that we have today, and it's been holding steady around 315, 320, so that gives him just a little bit of flexibility to be able to move. But each, each time they go into one of the day rooms, it's about a week, 10-day shutdown. So, it's, you can see it's, they're going to be struggling.
But Andy's been good to work, if he says he can do it, he'll, he can do it, yeah.
Do you know they take, what kind of health checks they do when they get new?
I do not. I know that they...
They do have a whole protocol in place, I do know that. They're working with the contractor. Nurse, I did talk to Randy briefly on that, and they do have a whole protocol set up of checking people.
Well, they've shut down, they changed their protocol yesterday. There's no visitors, you can't go into the jail.
You can't even do the video visits?
Yes, you can still do video. You can do video.
Okay, that seems safe.
But you can't go up to the second floor lobby like you could before, and which creates just a little bit of headache for the contractors now going in and out because every time they go in and out of the building, they're, they've got to be checked.
The contractors?
Yeah.
Good.
And so, there's only certain doors they can come in, which, which is where the nurses are stationed, but then that creates a problem when they have to bring in equipment. So, then, they have to alert the jail staff, "Hey, we need to come in this door to bring in equipment, so can you send a nurse back over this?" So, it slows down the workflow a bit.
Do you know what the protocol is if someone does have a fever that has been ordered to be incarcerated?
Well, I assume it's the same as it is here. They're, oh, you mean if it's incarcerated? No, I do not know. You mean if they get a fever while they're incarcerated?
Or, I mean, if they are ordered to be incarcerated and they have a fever?
I don't, I, and I know they would have limited places to have isolation. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Do you know what the answer is to that?
I know they have a, I've talked to Randy several times, and they're putting their whole protocol in place. And of course, that organization that we contract with has a lot of different places. So, I know they've been aggressively working on that, trying to figure out, well, what do we do? And it's just like the ships. If they do get somebody there, they're all going to be quarantined within the jail. They're not going to be let out. And because you can't let them out of there. And so, I know they're working on that. And the last time it tied, he said, "Can we have our protocol in place?" I said, "Fine, thank you."
If you go in the front door, you can get in the first door, but you can't get into the second door like you normally do. You have to push the intercom, and then, if you don't have any, you know, if you... There's really no reason to be in there at this point, but you can't, they just won't let you in.
You don't think Reed would want to take these individuals?
They're not going to take any of them. They're not going to let any of them out of the facility.
Hello, Craig, we have a few individuals we'd like you to house.
So, it does create a little bit of workflow issues for the contractors going in and out of the jail for this. The, as we take out all the lighting, you know, we're, we're switching over to LED lighting. We estimate that there is, gosh, 150, 200 of the T8 fluorescent lights. At some point in time, I think I'm going to suggest to you that we, because they're right now being stored over at the contractor's place. And I don't think, I don't see any reason for us to bring those here and try to sell them in auction. I mean, to go physically pick up these things, bring them back over here I mean, to go physically pick up these things, bring them back over here and store them till the auction, and then just get a few dollars out of them. I think I'm going to ask you at some point in time to declare these of no value and just let the contractor dispose of them.
I, if people aren't putting those in.
Yeah, nobody's using them. Nobody, nobody's using regular fluorescents anymore. Everybody's going to LEDs. I would agree with Steve. Unless you, I'm not asking you a day, but I think.
Yeah.
Why don't we just declare them no value today so we can go ahead? I'd move that we declare those lights of no value.
We'll have Ron put something together for us on that.
All right.
Yeah.
Let me just write that. And then we had a, at our presentation meeting, we had a, or at our status meeting yesterday, we had a presentation, a more in-depth of this water management system that's going to be installed. And I'm going to tell you, I really, I think in the long run, this is going to be worth the money that we're putting into it. It has the capabilities of a lot of things. I mean, they can, they can limit the showers that they take. They can limit the number of flushes that they can do. And then there'll be, there's actually a sensor in the toilet stool that if the water, you know, when you flush your toilet, there's always a little air gap. If that air gap disappears, there's a sensor in there that will shut it down so it no longer can flush that item further down into the, I mean, it does it automatically. Once that water level rises to the top of the bowl exit point, they can, and then when they're doing a lock, lockdown for a contraband surge, right now, when they, you know, they go into the first cell, well, the next cell's on down, know they're doing this contraband surge, so they've got time to flush their items. They can shut down all toilets at the same time when they're doing lockdowns. It's really a neat system. And I think it's going to give them a lot of options, plus it's going to cut down on our water usage significantly where, because they have inmates now that just flush and flush and flush and flush regardless.
They're bored, they're just bored.
Yeah.
Contraband is really going to be eliminated now between.
I tell you, with all the actions that the sheriff has taken, the inmates are going to have to start thinking of way new ideas to.
How to get it in there.
And then what to do once they get it in there. It's really a neat deal. The courthouse security equipment, the final input, remember, at our last security meeting at the jail we had, we gave them the following week, we got the drawings back from DLZ, and those were forwarded out to our security subcommittee. Everybody was given one last opportunity to look at them. We forwarded those back to DLZ. They've got those. So the week of April 6th, they will have the drawing and specs completed. They will bring those to your April 15th meeting for one last looksee and approval to go out to bids. And then the bids will go out the next day, and then you will receive bids on May 13th. On the jail floor, remember I told you that there would be a deduct? And I want to go over that with you. This is a change order that I want you to look at this morning. This would be a deduction of, right there in the center of the page, I've highlighted it, $41,209.62. The calculations on how that was arrived at is on the second page that I provided to The first item, remember, we had two extra drains put in because, remember, because of the drainage issue there in the main floor area. So the total cost of the drain was $9,100. During my discussion with the contractor, it was my feeling that we would have paid for the material if it had been put in in the first place. So, and then the routing of this drain required some additional excavation that would not have been included in the first portion of it. So we split the cost of that drain. So we would pay $45.50 for that new drains installation. And then the freezer cooler and the dry storage flooring area, this was calculated upon the square footage of the floor that we felt like didn't meet the flatness condition that was measured, remember, by that third party. And then the overall labor to install that, figured out to be $17.06 a square foot to install the floor. So under the freezer cooler, there was 6,500, or I'm sorry, 651 square feet of, that did not meet the flatness. So that's $11,100. In the dry storage area, there was about 67% of the 545 square feet. So that was another $6,200. Then the days that we came up with that were directly related to the contractor, because, you know, there were some of the, some of the delays were our part. For example, remember when we stopped midstream to paint? That wasn't in the original timeframe. So when we called in to have the walls painted, that was a four or five-day event. Remember, the equipment that we ordered, and the equipment was our order, remember, came in with the, with the wrong legs on it, and we had to reorder that equipment. And then there was, there was three or four days that the excavators couldn't jackhammer because of events going on in the jail, so we had to call them off. But we attributed 26 days directly to the contractor for the delay. And so the equipment rental, this is the freezers that we rented on the outside, are 65, 60 a day. And then the meal, the difference between what we paid for the meal and what we normally would pay on just normal, when we normally paid for meals, is a difference of $992 a day. So the meal premium was about $26,000. And then, remember, we brought in that third party to do a floor flatness test, and that was $920. And so you total those up, and a reduction of $41,209.62.
Very good, Steve. That's well done.
Has the contractor agreed to take this deduct?
Yes. Yep.
I have a question. The vendor meal premium is almost $1,000 a day for those bag meals?
Yeah, when you figure 300 and some meals times three.
It's a dollar a meal, huh?
Yeah.
Not bad.
Difference between what we normally paid, you know, for our normal service.
So it costs us an extra dollar per meal to do a bag meal?
It's a dollar six or something like that, yeah.
Good heavens.
Yep.
So you said last time we met that the first hot meal would be yesterday? Did that happen?
It was last Tuesday.
It was last Tuesday, okay.
Yep.
So that did happen last Tuesday. Good.
You're up and running.
Thank you very much.
So I need authorization for you to execute the change order.
I move for approval.
So, second?
Anadems.
So it's cost us $1,000 a day to have bagged lunches?
More.
Yeah.
Extra.
A thousand dollars a day extra?
Yeah.
What has our jail kitchen staff been doing?
You'll have to bring that up with the sheriff. I know that part of this is they have to serve them, and they have to assemble them because they don't come in preassembled, but I can't.
So we bag them and everything ourselves?
Yeah.
But they don't.
The stuff was stored in these, in our coolers, in the refrigerated portions. They didn't come in, because remember, they were put in plastic.
Sure. Paper bags.
Paper bags, and they assembled them.
Well, that's what our staff's been doing. You have to do that for every meal.
But they didn't actually assemble the meat and cheese and bread?
They didn't make it, no.
I can't, you, I don't want to answer for the sheriff. I just don't know what.
I had no idea it was $1,000 a day to put that food in a bag.
Well.
Well, you had to pay for the food, too.
And to buy the food.
Yeah.
It's the extra cost.
I mean, but it was an extra $1,000 a day of bagged meals.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we've, we had started some time ago distributing, or getting sanitizing materials. And as you can well imagine, some of the items are on back order. We have, we have a supply that will probably last us, at the current rate, a couple of weeks. We have distributed spray sanitizer to every office that they can use as needed, plus to the heavier public use offices, like the 4D office and, you know, the clerk's office. We also distributed hand wipes to them. Some of our supplies, we have been notified that they're, they're on back order now. So we'll just see where we go with the supply. We'll keep up as best we can, but what we got yet today, we're getting two cases of hand wipes in today, and they've indicated to that, that the rest of them's on back order, so.
Did you say, Dr. Kraft, you mentioned to Steve that Dr. Kraft asked for a mask for our screeners and things? Right. I have.
And gloves.
Gloves and masks for the screeners. I'll get with you on that for what we're doing.
The, the health clinic is out of masks, and so Public Health has donated to them a box of masks.
So we're very limited on what we have.
So they, Public Health has masks, and they have gloves, but they're low on alcohol wipes.
Right.
Yeah, I asked the syringe exchange people for the alcohol wipes, and they went to Dr. Jetmore, and he said, just use cotton balls and alcohol. So I brought in a bottle of unopened alcohol, and I don't know what they're, I just brought it from my home first aid kit.
All right. That it, Steve?
And then we've had two billion grounds workers that, one, one came in with a fever, and so he was sent home. He has since gone to his personal doctor, exhibited no signs of fever. The doctor, his doctor indicated that the temporal thermometers are not as reliable as the other thermometers. I suggested we start taking rectal thermometer readings.
For the doctor?
That didn't read. Anyway, so he's got a, he's got a doctor's slip to return to work today. Had another worker, midday, mid-shift, started feeling bad, and so they went home. So we're waiting for them to be cleared by their personal doctor.
Has that employee who did test with a pretty high fever come back to work?
Today. He'll come back today.
And he tested fever-free?
Yep.
Okay.
Get clear.
Those, those thermometers are really reliable.
I'm just telling you what this, what this medical physician said, that the temporal, these ones that we're using.
Oh, well, I don't know about that particular brand.
These ones, because these are small, almost look like a disposable.
All right.
Now, I know you've talked to Mike about a couple of things, and I don't know what your next steps would be, just a couple of things. Given that the fact, and I know the governor's proclamation indicated the gathering of 50, but I think the CDC now has, as the day before yesterday said, more than 10. What's our position? Well, we've had a couple of events canceled at the fairgrounds, and so we need to refund that money. We've got about $2,800 so far that we will be refunding. One of them was our, one of our biggest events, the basket-making group.
Oh, no.
Which is also a big, big contributor, I mean, to the hotel rooms and restaurants and so on and so forth. So that got canceled. The rural urban banquet was canceled. We've had some inquiries from, from other folks on what our stance is going to be. For example, what did I call yesterday of an upcoming pig sale, which is normally a pretty good-sized event? My, my thoughts are, we don't sanction these events. It would make sense to me that it's their call.
That's right.
And not ours.
We can tell them what the recommendations are, and it's what's your call. If they prepaid, we'll just refund the dollars. That's all we can do.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Wait a minute. By accepting rental fees for an event that we've already been told will have more than 50, is prima facie evidence that we are aware that we're going against the advisory?
We're not.
No.
They are. We're, we don't sanction it. We don't run it. We don't operate it. We don't, if there's, if there's, if there's fees to get into the event, we don't take it. We are providing a facility. That's my thoughts.
My thought is, we are a party to, we are participating in an event that is going against the advisory, which is taking an important step to end the spreading of this virus. My feeling is we should refund if we believe that it's going to be, currently, the governor is saying 50, right?
Yeah, but his, his thing came out before the CDC's changed to 10, more than 10.
I don't know where he is. Here's what I've done. I've flagged, I think you have a good point. I've flagged it. We'll get with legal. We'll find out very quickly.
When you going to do that?
Well, legal's supposed to be back sometime later this afternoon.
You guys going to talk about?
We'll be, we'll be around and on and so on, so we'll see what happens. And we'll get to you very quickly on that, yeah.
I was very uncomfortable. Saturday night, Coleman Center had 450 people.
We were packed. Well, the, we had a, we had a pig sale going on in the Raper Center.
At the same time, Coleman had 450.
NRA dinner going on at the Coleman Center. We had.
Well, they were all in before all this started. Same as, we were all road school, 3,005 people registered. If we'd been a week later, it would have been canceled. So I'll get with you on this and get it.
And then, you know, to follow up a little bit on Mike's conversation, and take my, my employee for, as the example, where he was, you know, sent home. Now, he, in his case, had sick days. Now, I come to work before the, all this, you know, I have to really, I have to be almost literally throwing, I'll come to work if I'm running a fever.
No, you won't.
Not today.
We'll send you home.
No.
You know, I don't, I don't take many sick days, and I've got employees who do that. Now, if we, what are we going to do if you have employees?
These are all things that we have to discuss yet.
I'm giving you these tidings.
We have Christine here. I'd like to discuss it with.
Well, we'll get to Christine in a minute.
I come to work with a fever.
No, he doesn't. These are all things.
We'll haul you out of here.
I'm all hot today.
Steve, these are things we don't have the answers to yet.
I know you don't.
And we're fully aware of all of those, and we're getting to them.
Because I'm having employees ask me these questions.
I know they're asking me every office I go in to get it. And we're, as soon as we can get answers, as soon as the feds make up their mind with what they're doing. And I hope, I know Mary Ann's watching that for us.
I'm reading everything. I've read my sleep.
My guys, the feds are taking too much time, and I'm working on this to get answers so we can send it out from us. So for all departments, here's what the policy is going to be.
Like if, like if a new employee doesn't have any time off.
I understand that. I've got that. Yep, we're working on it.
I want to keep those in front of you.
All right.
It doesn't matter what the Senate does or doesn't do. My position is, any employee who has an underlying health condition should speak to HR immediately about that condition.
Okay, but the question is, immediately ask HR, if I can tell you, the first question is, am I going to get paid? We don't have that answer yet, and that's what I'm working on. So let's, don't spend a lot of time on something we don't have the answer today on.
So that they are in position, so when we get the policy, they don't have to waste the time so that it's, they're in position to get paid. Because the State Board of Accounts has made it clear that just, it is no fault of their own, that they have to go home.
Yeah, but that hadn't 100% been decided yet.
Rand Paul is being muzzled now, finally, so that we can move forward.
Good.
He is the cause of this delay. And I think they finally muzzled it.
The Senate should have acted along.
Well, it's Rand.
Gordon, if you give me a minute before you come up, Christine really needs to get back. So Christine, come on up. We did have Matthew and Dan Burke were here. And so I know you said you'd try and drop in, so I really appreciate that. And I know you've been in meetings all morning.
I have, I have.
And so we appreciate it. If there's any updates you'd like to give to us right now, we'd be happy to have that. I know you're in the move. I know everything's coming. It's all coming at once.
Yeah, it was-
Fun. I know you read this morning.
The word that comes to my mind starts with an F, but fun is not that word. It's, it's been very, very difficult the past few days for public health across the nation and the state, and particularly in Wayne County. We are doing great. The offices putting, getting put back together today. Birth and death are up and, and running once we get our printer hooked up. That is to be done only by phone and, and through the mail. We're not accepting public into our office, and that probably will continue until we're past this phase of restrictions and things like that. It's imperative that public health stays healthy right now, because if we have one employee go down, you'll lose your whole entire department. And, so we don't want that happening, so we're, we're very, very cautious of, of what we're doing. All of our food establishments are being contacted right now, and getting clear direction from what is expected from the Wayne County Health Department after the directives came down from Governor Holcomb. How are we interpreting that? I was in a meeting this morning with Reed Hospital with the task force on that, you know.
We did have-
We are, we are, there, there's a lot of activity going on. Right now, Wayne County still does not have a resident that has tested positive, although there's been more than one test positive at Reed Hospital, but they're from other counties.
Right.
That doesn't mean we don't have COVID-19 in Wayne County, so it's really important that the guidelines that have been set forth are followed by the residents. I'm gonna put a press release out today. That's gonna be a little more clear. What I'm finding is, the public just doesn't even really understand, what do we mean? And so, I'm gonna try to be more clear on, what is a quarantine versus what is an isolation? And when are, when are we expecting someone to quarantine themselves, versus when are we asking people to isolate themselves? So there, there's gonna be clearer direction coming out from the Health Department.
Very good.
And- We did have our operations board this morning. Dr. Kraft, who runs the emergency department, did brief us on what Reed was doing and everything, so we're pretty well aware of what's going on. And, and as I said this morning, everybody's working together, and that's what we need to do. And you've said it to the folks here on the list, acknowledge, wash your hands, wash your hands, and wash your hands, and don't go together.
If you have a fever, stay home.
Right, right.
I've been saying that, I've been saying that for years, and so, if you, if you, he didn't, never heard that before. First time he'd ever heard that. But, yeah, it's important that the, the public follows those guidelines. We are trying to flatten that curve. I know the public has, has heard that. But we are doing the best that we can in public health to protect the public while not putting too much restrictions and tanking the economy. But we do know that these isolations and these restrictions that we're putting in place does have an impact on it. But what we're doing will save lives.
Right.
It will save lives.
Very good. Well, we thank you. That was, you had a quick question.
We have decisions to make, such as, do we continue to rent to large groups at the fairgrounds? I say no, what do you say?
Well, keep, listen.
Boy, well, you didn't say that right.
It's not our venue, we didn't do, it's not ours.
Yeah.
We, we have the facility, but we are, we're not sanctioning the event, and never have. So-
Well, I think by renting it, you are sanctioning it.
That's my position.
I, I, I do. I, I think that, as you guys have, have put forth a travel advisory, that you're actually going against your advisory to, to continue to rent. While you have that advisory, I, I would think that that in particular would be a time that you should look at, you know, restricting that. But I don't, I don't run the commissioners, and, and, but that, my opinion would be, we want all of these kind of mass gatherings, really, anyone over 10, or, or any group more than 10 should not. And in that group of 10, we want the, the physical distancing of six feet. So the recommendation from the Health Department would be-
Well, that's good, that helps us.
Okay.
When you recommend that. That gives us a position then to be able to say.
Either we lift the travel advisory, or we don't rent the venue.
Well, I still think, even if you lift the, the travel advisory, I, I think that it's a, it's a good, why we're in these severe restrictions, of the governor asking us to, to not have these, by renting it out, you're kind of going against what-
It's inconsistent, is my point.
That's my opinion, though.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that very much. All right, Gordon?
Air on the side of safety, I say.
I agree, that's a, God, I can't think of the guy's name right now.
Thank you. Fauci?
Fauci.
Yeah, Dr. Fauci.
Yep.
He should be canonized.
He's done a good job.
He sure has.
Good morning, Gordon.
How's it going, guys?
Very good.
Well, I'm having fun.
Are you really? Doesn't seem that way when I watch it.
Many hours, and, yes. You wanna buy some software?
We wanna buy some software.
Woo!
Just to give you a little update, our GPS coordinates for 25 years, or however long it was established, has been different than the state plane coordinates, especially when you tie into the towers. We've worked everything off of our base station, I'm gonna bore you to death here, I'm sure, off the base station that is on the top of the city building.
You lost me.
Right. So state plane coordinates, say, it's in one spot, but when you use the towers, it's a half a foot to the left, and about a foot to the north difference. So what we're gonna do is do a universal shift, and put all the coordinates into one. And I've notified all the surveyors, local surveyors, utility companies, anybody that might use our GPS system, and told them that we're gonna make this universal shift, and everybody's in agreement. And that eliminates a lot of confusion. Confusion that, again, would bore you guys to death. So, in doing so, we only have one seat on our GIS in our office for the, and I think Goonti has that, and that is purchased through the GIS department. So the surveyor's office doesn't have any of this software. So what we're asking is that we be allowed to purchase this software that would allow Rob to put it on his computer, and it would just help us out of the fact that we wouldn't have to rely on Goonti to do everything. We could make changes, especially with what we're doing with this issue.
Is this in your budget?
Yes.
Move for approval.
Second.
In unanimous.
Super.
Go get it, get it on, Rob.
There will not be a pop quiz on what you just said.
There will not be.
So which, which method is legal? Which one is recognized by the courts? Or any, or none of them are?
None of them, really. When you take, in surveying terms, and you look at the priorities, its intent, its occupation, and all kinds of things, and down at the bottom is coordinates, even though a lot of surveyors are trying to make that number one.
Yeah.
So that it's a universal coordinate system that they all utilize. The courts don't recognize that at this point.
Okay, so our GIS system has a yellow line on everyone's property line, or capable of that. Would, is that gonna shift? Is that-
No.
Okay, that's gonna stay the way it is.
No, no. Only the information on the section corners, and I, you may not be aware, but every section corner that we have located, and that Bill, in, in the past, has established a coordinate on that. We have sheets on those, it's shown on the GIS system. Anybody can pull that up and get the state plane coordinates for that. But all that will have to shift. We'll have to, we'll have to change each one of those individually. We haven't found a way to change all those sheets at one time. We can do the universal shift, but this is gonna take a lot of work on our office, and the interns are gonna be involved in this, in, in changing all of that information.
Very good. All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
I have nothing else.
Okay.
One after the fact per diem, the clerk went to the AIC, and it slipped her mind to have a $3 per diem request approved.
Move for approval.
The same hotel we had, second.
In unanimous.
And then I was asked to give a certificate of good standing for you to sign, Kim, but it's for the Wayne County Jail Holding Corp. And I don't think you're an officer of that paper, so we need Ron Crosses in foot.
Yeah, I talked to Kimberly yesterday on that, and she said, "Well, you signed it last year." I said, "I did." And so, anyway, we both decided we'd wait until Ron got back. She would ask him to make sure-
Absolutely. I mean, we could be consistent, but we could be consistently wrong.
Yeah, yes, okay.
And then, as you know, Ron will get here-
Later today, yeah, right.
He's not rushing back here to be here before lunch break, is he?
No, no.
Well, he's trying.
He's trying, but he's-
We get here after a lunch.
He's doing, he's doing his mother right now. And when I talked with him, I said, "Look, you gotta get your mother in, in place and everything," so that's about all we can say on that, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so we're-
As you know, the governor passed some directives about public meetings, advance notice, waiting concerns.
Right, and all that.
What you have for the afternoon, considering it's in session?
I don't know. I just say we, let's don't adjourn. Let's stay in session until Ron gets here after lunch.
Yeah. Well, if he's coming in, we might as well just keep cooking. We won't starve.
I don't know when he's coming, though.
I, I don't know whether he'll make it today or not. He, I'm not sure on that, whether he'll be making. So if we need to do something else, I can call something or something like that.
You can all get to him his own time right now.
Yeah, so, right, right.
But I mean, he's rushing to get here.
Well, he's trying, but, but he's-
No, he's maybe not. We don't know that.
I, I don't want to talk about what he's doing on-
I hate for him to rush to get here, and thus to break for lunch.
He's, he's not at this point, and I told him to take care of his mother first on all of this, and then, I'll get with us if, if we need to talk about-
I move to adjourn.
Here is all I want to do, and that is that any employee who is concerned about not separating from a crowded workplace, I want that individual to come register that concern with HR.
I don't have a problem with that.
That is all I want us to do immediately. I don't want that individual to feel that he should not come forward and register that concern. And I have every reason to believe that because the state of Indiana has taken that step for any individual who has an underlying health consideration, that includes anyone who is pregnant. I mean, CDC is saying, "We do not know about whether or not this virus is compromising to a pregnant individual or not." Or maybe someone who is a county employee-
They don't.
Who is married to someone who is pregnant, you know?
Yeah, they just don't know. It could affect the three of us today.
Right. And I think we could possibly find something for employees to do in isolation or at home for the county, that may not be what they normally do for the county.
Right.
You know, they could-
I have no problem with those individuals contacting HR, and, but we'll have to discuss and think about, okay, what can they do? And so that'll just take some administrative time for us to work on, to come up with, with those. So, yeah, so that's fine, so anybody, yeah.
I think, I think what HR has done in this first draft is, you know, I, I think we need to put something out to our employees.
Right. And what I want to try to be able to do is, when we get to that point, that we're not gonna have to make any changes on what we put out to the folks. That once we go and we make that decision, we'll be able to, to stay with it on there. And I think we can do it. We, we'll talk about it, yeah.
I don't think we need an executive session for that kind of decision.
Well, not for that, for them to contact HR.
But I don't wanna make the decision now.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see what we can do.
Okay, once we get with Ron, I think we need to sit down with Ron today.
Well, legally, if he's available today, we'll see what transpires on that, because this could change tomorrow. We might have to make another decision on what we're doing here, what we're doing with the courts. We've canceled one jury trial, jury call that we had, so 40 folks, and we may have to shut all that down, and-
Do we do want to take action on our rentals of the, of the property, though?
If you want to do that, I don't have a problem.
Well, I, I move that we do not accept any rentals for any county properties that involve-
Before you do that, I, I would ask, just run it past Ron, because we have a contract with these folks, and, you know, they've got a lot of other commitments that they've done.
Yeah, okay.
And it's not about, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we don't.
Right. And we're not encouraging those folks to-
Because some of these come a long way to get here, they've got free advertisement that they've sent out, you know, they've got a whole lot of expenses that they've already paid to have the event. And remember, the, the recommendation for the 10 or more is only through the end of the month. So, is your, is your, if you voted to do that, does it just run through the end of the month?
Well, that's the legal part we need to do. And it's on what's our contract say, you know, and, and I think we can arrive at some conclusion fairly quickly on that. But I, I agree, I don't want to encourage people who don't have me. We're encouraging you don't. And we're a little too close right here.
Yeah, we are.
We're supposed to be six feet, so we should be a little further apart. So I, I think those are all questions administrative that we have to answer, and we'll work on those. Yes. Okay, anything else at this time?
Move to adjourn.
Okay.